Ready to go? Okay. We're good, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education meeting today, Monday, May 8. We just want you to know that executive session happened tonight in the superintendent's office at approximately 6:00 PM, 104 Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel, litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting had been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. The public budget hearing tonight is taking place here at the Harrison School Building, 104 Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and being livestreamed. All community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person at the Harrison School conference room. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Budget Hearing is taking place tonight at approximately 7:05 PM. This meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, and the Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey. Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office, Harrison School Building, 104 Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and have been delivered to the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the role?
Yes. Student Representative Claire Kiernan. Ms. DiMartini.
Here.
Mr. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. D'Ambole.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
So five voting members present. We have a quorum.
Great. Everyone, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, are there any communications for the board?
None.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
I have none.
So we're ready for the budget hearing, Brian?
Yes.
Yes, great.
I'm ready.
We'll sit over there.
Yeah, we sit over there. We're gonna put the screen. Everyone see okay with the lights on?
That's right, that's a little better. That's good.
All right, get started.
Got a microphone. Got a microphone. Got a microphone. Gotta be a microphone.
I got mine right here.
Over there.
Okay.
Otherwise, I can't hear you.
All right, again, I'd like to, for those who haven't, I haven't been introduced to, my name's Brian Parthie, and I'm the school business administrator for the district. And I'm gonna take about 10 minutes to talk about the fiscal year 24 budget, and then afterwards, we'll have time for questions. Okay? Thank you. So I always start my presentations with describing what is a budget. And it can seem obvious, but what the budget is, is nothing other than a plan that the district has put together. In our case, the process started in October of last year. And what we do to put the budget together, we have detailed conversations with all of our directors, principals, supervisors, and they will literally write down everything they need, and we create essentially a zero budget, which means that we don't start off with the prior year numbers and just gross them up, say, 2% or 3% or some other amount. We actually say, what do you need? And things are added up by line, by school, by program, and then we come up with a budget. And it's reviewed by myself and then the other supervisors, and ultimately Dr. Conklin and then the board. What it does is it best reflects the organizational, the plan of the district, the mission, our strategic plan, and it's based, it's in monetary terms. It's about money. And again, I call it a living document because this is a plan, this is what we try to follow during the year, but things can change because, again, it's a budget. You know, very similar to your budgets that people have at home for their own finances. We've had some challenges this year. Unlike or like other public schools, we have, we're governed by what's called a 2% statutory cap on our revenue. And as most people have heard, we live what's called inflation now. We haven't had it for years. And if you listen to the news, you'll hear that the Fed is raising interest rates because inflation is high, costs are rising, and we're not immune from the rising cost pressures that we all feel. Public schools are feeling the cost, the new, the rising expenses. The private sector is feeling the rise in expenses. The one thing that's different about a public school is that unlike the private sector, we don't have the ability to raise prices to pass on increased costs. So we have a 2% statutory cap, and unless you have some other mechanism, that is where we are capped as far as revenue. Fortunately, this year, we have some unused and additional taxing authority that was given to us that is allowing the district to raise our revenue greater than 2% so that we can offset some of our rising costs. And these are, and our main drivers are costs, our salaries are going up 3.3%. We had a huge increase in our health benefits, 16.9% year over year. And then we have everything else that we have, which is the other 20% of our budget is going up. I put in my budget 5%, although we've seen inflation figures anywhere from 9%, trending down most recently to 4.6%. But inflation is falling, but it's still from elevated levels. So we're, again, we have some of the highest prices in 40 years. The one thing also about some of our unused taxing authority, it's a slang in our business called Bank Cap. It is created and it has to be used within a rolling three-year period, or we lose it. So this year, we've used some of that, and I'll elaborate on the next slide, or two. All right. Since I'm an interest rate guy, I did start my career at the Federal Reserve back in the 80s. I'll look at interest rates, and I thought these slides were interesting because if you look at interest rates, now CPI is the Consumer Price Index, there are various measures of inflation. This is the one we read about most or hear about in the paper. It's very correlated to all other prices. There's producer price indexes and so on. If you look, since the schools were obligated, or at least the statute changed to 2%, we had prices rising close to 2%, 2% to 3% for the last decade or so. More recently, to the right side of the slide, you see that we jumped up to almost 10%. And that was, that was December of 2022, and now we're trailing off. The next slide shows the same thing here, but this is over a period since 1950. So if you look in the center of the slide, 1980, for those who were alive then, you heard, you know, we had the highest inflation in, since the, well, ever, okay? The Fed, we had 20% short-term rates. You can see that inflation had been low for the next decades, and more recently, we've gathered up to levels not seen since 1980. So our costs, we are, you know, we're not immune to it. I keep on saying that. We're trying our best to manage costs, but we have experienced a number of rising supply issues or prices. This is our operating budget that we're proposing. The left side, and I try to make it so you can see where we're spending the money, the left side is our operating or revenue side. The right side in red, green I have in there is, that's where the money comes from. The red is our expenses, and this is a slide that shows our operating budget for 2000, excuse me, for FY '24. Also, what you can see here is that we had a tax levy, if we go 2% of our tax levy only, we can raise about $977,000. We are, we have the ability to raise it more than 2%. If you look at other items there, we have a $10,000 pension tax levy adjustment that they give us because we have an unusual pension. We have what's called a healthcare adjustment. I don't know if you can see in green here, it's kind of, it's kind of bright here, but almost $600,000 the state gave us as a one-time healthcare adjustment to our tax levy, which offsets our $1,002 on our rise in health benefits. And then we also have $615,000 of unused taxing authority that expires this year. It's called Bank Cap, that we can take to increase our revenue. So if you look at our total operating revenue, it's in the black there, it's $55,237,222. And additionally, we have a new about $2.6 million in revenue. What I want to comment on this slide here is that we have some one-time money that came to the district. It's called excess surplus. Now, when districts form their budgets, if there's money left over from the prior year, they're allowed to put some of that into their budget as revenue. We have $1,002 that came off from our most recent FY '22 fiscal year, and some of that is because during the pandemic, a lot of the aid that came to the district, federal grants and so on, supplanted some of our expenses, and so we probably had more money than typically we could have at the end of the year. In addition, we had $1,004 of excess surplus that was in our budget here because during the pandemic, we were allowed to keep 4% in what's called unrestricted surplus from the typical 2%. As of this year, we have to put it back in the budget, or we can put it into a restricted reserve account like capital reserve. So on the top there, I put that in yellow. So we have $2.7 million, which is gonna go away next year. So what we've done as a district is we've gone through and identified a number of, I call one-off projects, that we can spend the money this year, and if we don't spend it at things like, you know, doing the tennis court over, doing the red top over at Lincoln School, and things of that nature, if we don't spend the money, it will go back into what's called restricted reserve, which most likely we're at capital reserve next year for long-term projects. So on the left side here, we have $2.6 million of new revenue, that's again in the green. Where are we using this new revenue? On the right side, salaries. We're up a total of salaries of about $770,000. When you have a $32 million budget for salaries, if you go at 3.3% on an average, that's where we're contracting most recently for teacher increases, that's about a billion bucks. We're only $770,000 this year because we actually spent slightly less than what we budgeted last year. So we're spending $770,000 of that new money that was raised, of the 2.6, on salaries, health benefits and other employee benefits, we're up $1,002, $1,169 from last year. So between those two items right there, we're close to $2 million. The other part of our budget, I said, all other expenses, I said, we're averaging. So we have things that are up 20% like tuition, we have some things that are up 7%, we have some things that are, they're rise. But on average, I budgeted plus 5% on the other $12 million in our operating budget. So if you add up those three categories, there's the use of the new $2.6 million that we raised on the revenue side. So this is our operating budget, which is called, which is our Fund 10. We have two other funds. We have federal grants and we have our Fund 40, which is our debt service fund. These are, you can see that our IDEA is something that we budget every year. This is money called, it's an acronym for the Individual Disabilities Education Act. Most of this, of this money goes into offset some of our tuition expenses. We had, if you see, look in FY '23, we had a bunch of this money called ESER. This is the last tranche of money that came from the government from the pandemic. It was called the American Rescue Plan. That's what the ARP, is the acronym for. I only have $400,000 left that's budgeted, and we're using that to continue to pay for some of our one-to-one Chromebooks. So that's the total of our Fund 20, and the large difference you can see is that some of the ARP grants have been spent down. Finally, we have our debt service fund, and that is $47,000 less than last year. And this is the fund where we pay principal and interest on our long-term debt. So total budget for fiscal year '24 is $61,389,767. So we're roughly up $600,026,000 from last year. We have a number of places where we spend the money, and this slide here shows the expenses and the left side here under the general fund, I listed the major programs that we have. And I know the numbers are small from the back here, but you can see that we have, and I'll go over the next slide, the differences. We have, we're up $267,000 year over year in special education. That's largely because we hired new inclusive teachers since last year's budget in that line. We have, we are, actually, I'm gonna go to the next slide. What I wanted to point out here is that if you look at all the programs, the programs will add up to $57,469,247. If you look at that $57 million, then I broke it down to category. So of the $57 million in our operating budget, $32,440 is salaries, $10 million approximately is in health benefits. So of our $57 million, approximately 75% are employee benefits and salaries. You know, we're people business. This is where all the money really largely goes. This slide here shows, it corresponds with the last slide. So for special education, things in red are increases in expenses. Things in green here, these are all expenses, mean that we spent less than the previous year. This is my way of showing that. It's green because it's less than we spent last year. So for special education, between last year's budget, we hired four inclusive teachers at the elementary schools. In the co-curricular, we are up $115,000 in spending, largely for an increase in the music department, arts, and drama. Tuition, we have up $316,000. I can tell you that many of our tuition contracts are up, some are up as high as 20% compared to last year. So we have increase in added district placements. We have some tuition settlements where, which are contracts where we negotiate with parents. They think it's beneficial for them to receive a payment, and we think it's beneficial to have a finite amount for the services we're gonna provide to the students. In guidance, we are down $226,000. This is more of an accounting, accounting issue in the budget. So last year, in FY '23, we had $400,000 that was in purchase services for guidance services through a provider. We decided to hire people directly for the district to do the same thing. So we hired two people directly from this purchase servicer, this provider, and we hired two others directly. So we have four new teachers, and these teachers were then actually placed in the regular instruction at the schools. So we are in the process of also hiring an additional, a new position, a college and career counselor. So the difference was $326,000. As we reconfigure the guidance service department, these positions will then be created under new line, and next year, you'll see a corresponding increase of $326. There's really been no change. The positions are already there. Under improving instruction, we are spending $375,000 more than last year. This is to increase what we call smart support. This is additional funds that are through local, our local, which is our local taxes. We also have some smart support from federal grants that provides extra help for academics for our students, additional spending on curriculum supplies, purchase services, and summer teacher programs. We are gonna spend $172,000 more in staff training and supplies. We have $700,000 that's additional in this line, and the reason is largely because of those projects I told you, the one-off projects through that excess surplus where we're gonna do things to our buildings. Employee benefits, I told you, we're up $1,169 year over year. Here's one thing about our benefits. We are in a state education health benefit plan, and, excuse me, they raised it 16.9%. We are doing all we can to look at this as a cost. It's a rising cost for many districts and other people in the state education health benefit plan, but at this point, we are, our loss pay, loss pay ratio is over 100%. So what that means as a district is that insurance companies are paying out more in claims than we are paying in premiums. So when you're over 100%, you're not, you're not a great client. Actually, the insurance company loses money on you. So we hope that this ratio improves and that we're able to go into a market and at least see if there's better options for pricing. Currently, we're kind of stuck here until, until we can find better options. Finally, facilities, construction, capital outlay, we are down $1,205. We had many projects last year that we used some of our restricted reserves, and we're not budgeting through that category this year. These are some of the things that we did in this year. We spent money upgrading security, new cameras, new door access and access systems. They're in a process of being completed. We're hoping they're gonna be completed by September 1st, when the students and staff are back to school. We're in a process of refreshing and upgrading the Grover Cleveland auditorium. We got stage one done. It's contracted. It should be awarded next week, and then stage two is gonna be to put new technology in that, so really bring it up to, I say, 2023 as far as what could, you know, what should be at a, at a high school for a, an auditorium, a performing arts center. We've also, we've done to, excuse me, we have replaced a gym floor at the high school. We've paved the playground at the elementary. We also put a data center. We're gonna put a, excuse me, a generator in the data center because we live in a town where we lose power all the time. So when we lose power, the entire district goes down. So what we're hoping to do through this investment is if we lose Grover Cleveland, we have continuity and we continue to power our, our technology infrastructure for the rest of the district. And finally, we continue to buy technology for the district, new Promethean boards. This is one of them back here, but they've been a very large and new, I'd say, very successful new type of teaching equipment for our district, and additional Chromebooks for our one-to-one initiative. In our budget this year, I told you about what we're hoping to do in the facilities, change the red top at Lincoln School. We're gonna look at Wilson to improve the parking. We will, Grover Cleveland, we're gonna repave, new fencing, the, we're gonna refence and pave the playground behind Grover Cleveland. Our bus parking and terminal is gonna move to that location, and we have hopes of resurfacing the tennis courts at the high school. On the personnel side, we are gonna hire a new ESL teaching position, and as mentioned before, we're going to improve the guidance services by hiring a college and career counselor. On the academic side, we have additional spending I taught you about to improve instruction and staff training, co-curricular, and then we will continue to spend on our K-12 math program. Technology continues in FY '24, their one-to-one initiative. And finally, on the, on the technology side, we hope to improve the wireless for the district. Taxes, this is what we care about. These are the taxes that, the dollars that were paid by the towns last year compared to this year. We're looking for a 4.5% dollar increase in the tax levy for the two towns. It's $2.2 million, $2,198. On the debt service, we're actually down a little. We're down about, it's actually, it's about $32,000 difference, and that's really just the PNI schedule, principal and interest schedule for our debt. So the total tax increase is 4.26%. This is the tax dollar increase. This is not the tax rate increase. These are the estimated tax rates with debt service, and this is good news. The good news is that our equalized rates in the towns have gone up, which means their ratables are higher than last year. For Caldwell, we're gonna see a 0.296 decrease in the average tax bill. So the average house, that's the average house for each $100,000 assessment, your tax bill should go down approximately $29.60. For West Caldwell, for the average $100,000 tax assessed value, it should go down $47.60. These are the ratables. If you look at Caldwell and West Caldwell, the ratables are up $55 million for Caldwell. For West Caldwell, it's $195 million. My analogy for ratables is that, think about going to a restaurant and you have a new bill. So we had a, we're up 4.266% from last year. So this year, as opposed to spending $100, we're spending $104.26. Last year, we had 20 people split the check. This year, we have 21. So each person is paying less. Okay, that's, that's my analogy for what's happening for taxes. Because we have more people splitting a check, everyone's tax bill is slightly less. Again, the average assessment in West Cal last year, and again, they'll probably come up with new assessments when they finish this year, was $446,000. So a family should expect to spend $17.69 less each month on their taxes. For Caldwell, they don't come up with this statistic, but if they're, they don't keep average assessment, but it was for 446, just to make them apples and apples, it would be $11 less per month for the, for a house that's assessed, assessed at $446,000. User-friendly budget, which is a, what it sounds like, it's easier, it's supposed to be easier to understand the numbers that are presented here as well as other information, will be on our website tomorrow, and I guess it's time for questions if you have questions for myself or the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, thank you, thank you, Brian. So before, we're going to move to public comments on the budget. But before we do that, I just want to go over the rules. So public participation shall be governed by the following. The participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration and may only address items on the agenda. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or across examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board this evening will be resolved. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's comments if it exceeds the allotted time or is objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. So before I open it up to the public, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Brian at this point in time? Okay, if anyone in the public would like to come up and has any questions on the budget this evening?
Hi.
Hi, John.
John King, Natalie Drive, West Caldwell. I had a few questions. The first one is, I thought there was a bond in two thousand and eight that was expiring in two thousand twenty-three. It was a fifteen-year term. And I can't, I looked at your budget online, on the, the website, and I can't figure out if there was, if that bond is over or where that money went. That's my first question.
I can answer. So it hasn't, it hasn't. It's the first, it expires in FY twenty-three. So we have through this, Jimmy, FY twenty-four. So we have this year and then next year, and then our first year without payment on that debt is in fiscal year twenty-five. So we have one more year to pay on it.
Okay. I see you're using a lot of the COVID relief money. That COVID relief money, ironically, the people are still paying for that bill with higher prices. That's one of the things that caused. I don't think putting it into facilities is the way to go. I think that should go for tax relief. You have the bond coming up in two thousand and twenty-four. That's where you take out and go after facilities. Right now, you're compounding the problem. People need the tax relief. I know you were happy. That's, you said it's a good thing. We get this bank cap. You're happy, but I don't think the residents will be. Do you have any comments on that?
No question. Is that a question?
Yeah, John, do you have a question, like?
A question. Why don't you use the COVID relief money instead of these projects to reduce the four and a half percent tax increase and wait for the bond to do those projects? It seems simple.
I guess I would just say, as you know, a bond referendum is not a guarantee, right? So the bond referendum may pass or it may not pass, but some of the stuff that we're trying to do, like right now, spending money to refurbish and improve the auditorium in the middle school, that auditorium in the middle school is in bad shape, and it, it needs to be fixed. Our tennis courts, if you go to our tennis courts, they're nearly unplayable at this point. These are not vanity projects. Like, these are areas that are in pretty stark disrepair. And since we have the one-time relief, you know, the board's decision has been, let's take this opportunity to fix these up. Because even if we, let's say we do go for a bond referendum, right, we're talking about, you know, fifth, kids who are in fifth grade right now won't get to see that auditorium if we wait for the bond referendum, if it even passes, which is very much a contingent thing.
Okay, that's, you know, but the way I see it, if you use your reserves now to do those, those projects, do you even need to go with a bond? What is your master plan for that bond when it comes to, can that, at that time, go for tax relief? Chris?
I don't know if you can go for a bond in order to get tax relief. I don't.
Well, it just, if it just expires, you don't have the debt service payment. You can reserve whatever you want.
I would say what we're looking at right now is, is about a million, maybe two million as far as the one-time payments. Sounds like a lot of money, and it is, let's be clear. But, you know, fixing auditorium, six hundred thousand dollars, right? The tennis courts are expensive. We've been trying, we've been looking at this HVAC in the high school forever. The quote on that ended up being what?
Two quotes, nine hundred and eighty-seven.
Right. We ended up passing on that because we didn't feel it was, it was one of those things that absolutely had to be done. The bond referendum, as you know, John, you, I mean, you, you've seen these things before. They're for far more than two million dollars or one million dollars, right? And as I'm sure you've seen, we, we've been employing a bunch of architects to come and analyze our facilities for long-term improvements. Yeah? So one of the first things we've seen is one school, if one school needs their roof done, it's millions of dollars, I think. I'm not speaking at a turn. Am I, Brian?
No, you're right. Yes.
Millions. So that, like, if we wanted to fix one school roof, pow, that's everything you saw up on that board cleared out. And then there is no auditorium, and there is no tennis courts, and there is nothing else. So, and again, I can't reiterate enough, the referendum is, is a contingent possibility. For us to, like, say, we are one thousand percent sure we're going to get that referendum, well, wow, if we go out there and a bunch of people say, we'd rather have the tax money in our pockets, which God bless them, that's their choice, that's what referendums are for, and that referendum doesn't pass, well, we've lost five years and, and there's been no progress on any of these facilities that are, like I said, tennis courts, auditorium, really in dire straits.
I understand what you're saying, that the bond may not pass, but it's more likely to pass if you've, if the residents feel that you're being fair to them with the taxes. You know, this is going to hit the residents hard, another four and a half percent. I think West Caldwell, God knows what's happening in Caldwell. Those are your cohorts up there. Have they ever apologized for what they did there?
So I think what Brian's mentioning is it will have an impact on the taxes. You're right about that. But because of the ratables, everybody in both towns, we believe, is going to pay less this year than they would next year, even though our take is going up for sure. There's no doubt about that, right? We're not trying to hide the ball here. Because both towns have done such a good job over the years, and because our community is so great, probably because the schools are so great, you know, all the values have gone up. And so as a result, based on what we've seen, we think people will actually, even though the schools are taking more to do these things that we need to do, there will be less money paid in taxes next, last, next year than there was this year.
Okay. Well, so that'll be to get your bond passed. I mean, that might help. But you have to worry about, when you talk about ratables, that's just on residential. You're in the markets, you know, you've had a job in the markets. I know you know that commercial real estate is in a decline. Now, I know the commercial buildings tax appeal every year, and usually the town has to fight it, and they usually lose. But when you start getting comparables or distressed sales, the commercial real estate, they're not going to win the tax appeals, and that's going to put more strain on your residents with the single family. You, you might know how that works. I mean, talk about projecting the future, but.
John, that, that was three minutes. I'm just going to invite someone else, and then you can come back up. I just want, I want to put it out. So I don't want to be rude, but I'm going to let you.
You know my point. I think everyone understands. I'm not going to.
We do.
You know, keep repeating, but that's where I think we should be.
Thank you. But you can, you can come back up, John. I just want to give everyone else a chance. Does anyone else want to come up, have any comments? Madeline?
Madeline Brown, thirteen Berkene Dean. Budget is not my area, so I thank you for your presentation. That kind of made it a little bit understandable for me, and John is mentioning ratables, is residential. So I do have a question. In the new budget, with the new things being built, particularly on Lane Ave, which will obviously be the high school and middle school, but also Jefferson, I assume, when you talk about ratables, we're going to have an influx of more people? Does this budget allow for that? Does it, does it plan for more students entering our schools than we have?
So, so, hold on, let me just, I'm trying to stop your timer because that's, I'm talking. You shouldn't have to.
I got nothing.
You don't, you don't lose time because I'm talking. So we're actually, a part of the ESER funds and part of the local funds are going to go to, to finish the renovation that was started in Harrison School several years ago. So that way, if we do have a large influx of students, we will actually have another functional school building.
Okay.
So yes, we are planning for that in the future. We did have a demographic study done. Even with all the building and everything that's going on, they didn't project a huge increase in population. Actually, they projected a static increase and some shrinking in some areas, believe it or not. That's what they predicted, but just because we know we have other aging buildings, we wanted to start the renovation process. And while we had federal grant money, we wanted to take advantage of it. So that's why we're going to finish the renovation in this building with that money.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, that's, okay.
Anyone else? Andrea?
Hi, Andrea. Fifty Park Avenue. I know, I'm not, I'm not one good with numbers, but, but I did see the increase with the numbers that we were talking about with the twenty-two percent with the community service. Why, what, I'm just curious why the increase was so much of that. So my increase, my, sorry. My question was, what's included with that, with the services in the town, and what's the reasoning for that increase? It's twenty-two percent. So it was fifty-one thousand dollars for my thing fiscal year twenty-two to now, to the present time?
It was up thirty thousand dollars.
And then it was one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four.
Thanks, Andrea. Brian, you're digging around to get that.
Yeah, it's, we're, so we went from, I can tell you what these programs are. It's a thirty-thousand dollar increase. What's that? No, I can tell you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Wait, thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, it went from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. So it was twenty-two percent, but we're talking a thirty-thousand dollar increase in.
Is that the rate, is that the line you were talking about, Andrea?
That was the one you were talking about. So it was up, up thirty thousand.
Um, I wrote down, maybe I saw it wrong because I was looking on my phone. It was so small. But I thought I saw fifty-one thousand dollars in the year twenty-two, and now.
One fifty, they're talking about the community service programs. Sorry, I'm talking over.
Yes, yes, yes. The community service operation.
It was one fifty in twenty-three, and it's one eighty-three this year. And we're just going to get the specific.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It was one fifty last year, and it's one eighty-three this year. We'll get you the specific detail in a second.
So these are our continuing, continuing education programs. So we, we do a lot of things for the community, and we have a thirty-thousand dollar increase in our, in our community, our continuing education programs. These are night programs. We offer classes, things like pickleball. There's other courses that are popular.
Ceramics.
So that, that's what that is, the thirty thousand. There are community service programs.
And a lot of people have to pay for those, for the continuing education courses? So what are the expectations for that? Like, are they having the taxpayers pay for these courses? So like, what? I didn't see the thirty thousand. Hold on, let me grab my phone. Sorry.
So this is continuing education salaries.
Oh, geez.
Send a program, okay, for, we're still yes?
You could just tell me to move.
And the salary, salaries and, what's that? Yes, yeah.
Yes, I have it right here. The actual number for the year twenty-twenty-two was fifty-one thousand. And now it's a hundred and eighty-three thousand. For last year was the hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand.
So the.
But for twenty-two was fifty-one thousand. Is there a reason for that huge jump in increase?
Well, these are, these are salaries for the continuing education program. We also have another fund. It's called Fund Sixty-One, where we, we generate revenue that offsets
Offsets the cost?
So we have to budget, we have to budget for it, and then we collect tuition, which then zeros out that line. But we have to budget for it, and then the tuition from the people zero out that line.
Oh, I get it. Okay.
So the more people that are involved, the money comes in more. So it wasn't budgeted correctly going into twenty-two. So twenty-three, we had to make sure we raised the budget so it was equal to what the collection we were getting because the revenues needed to match.
Oh, I got it now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for explaining.
Anyone else have any questions?
Good evening. Steve Sandor, seventy-two Forest, out of Caldwell. I just wondered if you could just detail a little bit more of this with, about the ESER funds and what the timeline is on that. Because I know the ESER funds were, they were some of the lead funds in, but if there's a time, how much more time is left on those funds to be spent? Because I saw it, it was just been spending off. But just to understand, I guess, globally, like, how much longer is that money going to be there? What's the timeline of it to spend it before it gets just done?
Next year.
September thirty, twenty-four.
That's it.
September thirty, twenty-four. So, and then that, that's.
So all zero, gone. We don't spend it, we have to give it back. So believe me, we'll spend it.
Okay, all right.
There'll be no, there'll be no check back.
Okay, all right. So I just, I, just because I understand, like, looking through the budget line, those things are there. And then I just, on a side note, I was here probably about a year ago when we were having a lot of different concerns about students and how we're supporting our students in Caldwell, especially with the social, emotional counseling, things like that. I do want to just come back and say thank you because I do, I'm looking on here, the auditorium, the investment in the extra curriculum for drama and music, that's something that I, I mentioned specifically. So I just want to thank the board for listening because, you know, we invest a lot in athletics. My younger one is in third grade. It looks like she's going to be on the athletics track. She'll be good to go. But my older one has been telling me the shaky condition of the auditorium in the middle school, where she's like, Dad, there's certain parts that we don't want to step near, kind of thing. So I appreciate that being addressed. And then again, the counseling services, because that's something we brought. I know at one point we were talking about different, you know, resource officers, things like that. The fact that you, we've been investing in bringing in additional counselors and just also not contracting out, but by growing people in-house, hiring that staff that will make those connections with the kids. Again, I know you guys get a lot of heat for stuff, but I, I do want to just acknowledge that, that, that you're listening for these programs because I, I do believe in, in having our kids be well-rounded and having the supports they need. So just those two things. Thank you.
Julian, I don't want to speak at a turn here, but I do believe Dr. Conklin did a lot of the kind of leadership on the counseling and putting things in place.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? John, want to come back up?
Nothing about the other stuff I was talking about. I wanted to go on to something else.
Okay.
More for informational purposes. Now, I know it's all true. I, I hear from my wife. She happened to, she's in the state medical plan at municipal level, and her raise took her over the next tier as well as the increase. So she had a pay cut. So I can sympathize with the teachers. And also, you notice that there's no cola on those tiers. They remained exactly the same for twelve, thirteen. I don't know why the, somebody should say something about that, but that's terrible. My question is, do your numbers factor in, did anybody take a lesser plan based on these large increases, and was that money factored in? Did the Marillos come in and we, we still use them?
We do.
For, do they have a plan, or do they educate the people on, especially new people? When you get young children, I, I have five kids. They're all out of school and working. I advise them. I advise them for, like, a catastrophic plan more, and build up the money in the HSA, and, uh, you know, I just was wondering if you try and educate the staff, and especially new teachers on what, because it's clear that the state wants to get rid of the Direct 15 and all these things. And I keep it, so, um, you know, we just paid, my wife paid, she tells me for that, so.
Brian, you wanna?
I can answer short, yeah, so we still use ICAP in the Marillos, and, uh, John, our first que, uh, my first question to them was, can we get out of this plan, or actually, I told them, the numbers came before they told me, I said, I said, to the Marillos, Joe, I said, we can't get out of this, this plan, because, no kidding, because we were upside down with the lost pay ratio. But as far as educating the staff, um, we, and how I budgeted, there was an expectation that because of the higher rates, that some people would go to the next plan, which is the EHP plan, so the state came up with a, a higher, I would say, it's not higher deductio, but it's just somewhat less services than the traditional plans, and so, we did, the plan is actually not bad, um, for employees, um, but we get less in employee, what's called health benefit contributions. So I did factor in, and say, how many people do we expect to actually move from the 15 to the EHP, because, because under the EHP is chapter, um, excuse me, the traditional plan is called Chapter 78, and as you told your wife, they pay a percentage of the premiums based on their salary, and you're correct, you can get a raise, go to the next level, and your new step up.
Happens all the time.
It negates your raise, and that's, that's, that's an issue. So I did look at, and decided how, what percentage might go to EHP, so we budgeted less of the employee contributions, uh, in the, in our numbers, what we expect, so, we're cognizant of that.
It, it works both ways, though.
Yes.
The other, there, what's the top, it's 35%.
35%.
It's a lot of money.
Sure is.
I mean, it's 30, 40,000 dollar plan. That's a, it's a lot.
Yeah.
I feel for the people. And there's no coal on the brackets, like I said, there was, and there's no coal on the pension either, so, some of the public employee jobs have lost, it's a lot of value, and I'll admit that, and I understand that. One other thing, uh, I'm losing my train of thought, I had one other comment, oh, it was on you talking about moving into a private plan, I understand exactly what you're saying, we did, we were able to do that once, maybe seven, eight years ago, and we had a high cost, like, the following year, and we had to move back, so, that's, you know, totally believable.
That's what happened with the state plan for us, it was, it was, it's always good the first few years, and then, and then they come up with a more restrictive plan to try to cut costs, and then you can't get healthcare if you drive outside New Jersey, so.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, good evening, Brad Degnan, 12 Crossbrook Lane, West Caldwell, uh, I did have a number of questions, but I wanna thank Brian for going through his nice presentation, cleared up a bunch of stuff, and, and the board for obviously helping out. Just wanna say, everything looked good to me, um, I'm not a numbers guy, but based off of what I looked at over the weekend, and then coming in and looking at the presentation, I don't, I don't have too many questions left, just, uh, I know it's tough putting budgets together from a household to a school district and, and above, so for the board, and the teachers, and faculty, and the staff, um, to make the decisions they have to make, I think this, this looks good, and just wanna thank everyone for putting the numbers together for, for the rest of us.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? You good, Liz? You're our numbers girl. Okay, fine. Yeah, come on, Liz, you gotta, you gotta close out the night here.
Your last chance for the next fiscal year.
I know, Liz Hart, 149 Ravine Ave, I actually just wanted a clarification, because it was my understanding that the, um, middle school auditorium was built into last year's budget, but it was brought up for this year's budget, so which, right, Brian?
So what we, uh, spent was last year's budget.
For the, the auditorium, right?
Correct, right.
For this year, so it is not coming out of this future.
No, yeah, Liz, I invoked that as, because John was asking about the one-time spending money, so I was invoking the one-time spending money as an example, but the stuff that you saw Brian put on the, on the, like, the tennis courts, the stuff in the presentation for 2024.
Security cameras, all those.
Yeah, the red, the red top for Lincoln, that's gonna be the next year's budget.
Right.
That was just illustrative of us using the one-time money for one-shot things that aren't recurring costs in the budget.
Okay, okay, cool.
I should've been more clear about that.
Okay, that's my only question.
Thanks, Liz. Anybody else, any more questions or comments before we go to vote? This is the only thing we are doing tonight. Once, twice? Okay, before we take the vote, I'll extend to the board any comments they have.
I would just say, this is my third year being involved with the budget process, and I learned more in the last four months than I did in the previous two years, um, and a lot of that is due to the diligence of the two new board members, Terry and Danielle, who really aggressively, um, looked through all the numbers, and really held us to a higher standard, which caused me, as the head of finance facilities, to learn more about what my job is, um, and I'm appreciative of all the work that, that everybody did. John's, right, that, you know, this is an increase, it's also important to note that we had originally budgeted for a higher increase, and ultimately, the board elected to give roughly a million of that dollars back, um, to the community, which we could've taken, right, it goes away after this year, we won't see it next year, uh, but it actually went back into the community as a result of that decision, which I thought, you know, people have different opinions, but that was where the board landed on a consensus basis. The increase is still high, um, because of largely the healthcare, right, that's just flat math, it's just a million dollars more, and it's gotta come from somewhere. With the ratables, this is a good opportunity for the community to, um, help with that issue, and not necessarily feel it dramatically in the pocketbook. The alternative is that we go into the budget and we take it from somewhere else, that we find another line item, whether it's professional development, whether it's, you know, athletics, or, or arts and drama, whatever the case may be, we have to find that money and put it to stop that gap. So, you know, to the extent that this budget does pass, we're, we're very appreciative, I'm personally, as the head of facilities and finance, appreciative of the board members, and also appreciative of the community for helping us continue to maintain the standards, increase the standards without impacting our teachers or our kids.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanna actually say thank you to the board for the time that I know you gave to us to explain things, and take the time to sit with us, especially to Brian, who dealt with a lot of emails, um, and.
What I do.
Just, just a lot, a lot of, um, questions, and to you, Steve, I think that the three people who've been here on the board before, um, were really passionate when we came on about driving home the concerns that they had heard, especially over the last year with, um, the areas that you talked about, with the arts especially, so, thank you all.
I, I mean, the only thing I would like to say again, to echo and Terry, um, and Chris, this was, you know, a collective, I think, um, effort on the board's part to get it to a number where we were comfortable with, um, and I think that this board, you know, this represents our future, and our children, um, and our staff, so I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it.
Chris, you wanna say anything?
No, I'm not.
He's a man of few words.
I was good, I, I would say that, out of all the years that I've been here and doing this budget, this year was the year that I've learned the most because of Brian and Dr. Conklin, so it was very, it was very nice to see that.
And just to formally cap it all, because I think my colleagues have said it better than I ever could, but I do wanna extend my sincere thanks to Dr. Conklin and Brian, you both made a tremendous effort, I can also say that, you know, being on the board five and a half years, again, agreed, this was the most I've ever learned, and I can honestly say fully understand the budget, which I think we're all hats off, so, to the both of you, so thank you for that. I really wanna extend my thanks to Mr. Elko, because he is the head of finance and facilities, and shouldered the burden, there were many phone calls from my, my desk at work to him multiple days, like, what can we do, how can we do this, blah, 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 and he always is willing and able to sit down with each and every one of us and help us, he had his whiteboard out multiple times, and his expo markers, and that was wonderful, and to Mr. D'Ambole, who serves as the co-chair as well, who's always like our stabilizing force, and to our two new members, to Danielle and Terry, I just wanna thank you both, when I tell you all that you elected two people who have taken your concerns and brought it to the table, and believe me, there were a lot of hard discussions that happened behind closed doors over this budget, but I am very grateful and proud to have them on the board with us, and to be part of this journey, and your questioning and your pushback on things, it made a difference, and I know that you were both very tormented, um, to get to this moment, but, um, I just wanna say, no matter how anybody votes tonight, you're appreciated, and we're grateful to you. I also wanna just say that the board always listens, like we say in the public comment, we might not solve the problem this evening, we might not have an answer, but we always listen, I am very confident that this budget is indicative of our support and our love for our teachers, Sue, representing them back there, and to educating the whole child, socially, emotionally, and academically, okay? And whatever they may excel at, academics, arts, um, just being a child, right? My passion is that this board, this board and this budget supports all of that. So with that being said, Brian, um, I'm gonna ask, we're gonna make a motion to approve the budget.
Yep, um, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Caldwell West, I move that we approve the budget.
And may I have a second?
I will second it.
Okay, Brian, can you please take the roll?
Yes, Ms. DiMartini?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambole?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five, zero, motion carried.
And before we make a motion to exit, and.
I just wanted to remind everybody, um, to say thank you to your teachers, it's Teacher Appreciation Week.
Um, yay, thank you to our teachers!
Sent an email to them this morning thanking them, and attached a YouTube video that is a thank you song that I remember sharing years ago, and I hope it's stuck in their head all day long, Sue, I hope that's stuck in your head all day long, because it's still in my head right now, I can't get it out of there, so.
We love our teachers, Sue, we love them, we love you, thank you to our teachers. Um, so we also have some, um, exciting news tonight, that, um, brought before the board a couple of weeks ago was, and Brian and Chris, please jump in, because I know I'm gonna botch this up out of excitement and pride, um, Mr. Romano, um, with the encouragement and help of our head foot, so Dan Romano, our athletic director, and head football coach, Mr. Todd Romano, brought to the district, um, the exciting possibility that the Caldwell West Caldwell School District will become a Nike-sponsored school district, um, and Friday, Brian signed that contract, so we're proud to announce that the Caldwell West Caldwell School District is officially sponsored by Nike. Anything you'd like to add about that contract, Brian, at all?
So you'll be, I'm sorry, I'll try and talk, and then.
No, no, you go, you go.
So you'll be seeing all of the new, uh, all of the new online sports stores will be Nike, so all of them, all the things you'll see kids wearing now, obviously, it's your transition year, so you may see kids in other things, but eventually, you'll see all the Nike logos on all of our sports equipment, all of the athletic equipment, and then when people go online to buy stuff for their kids, and stuff for their families, it'll all be Nike.
And Brian, it is a cost savings to the district.
So there's a financial benefit.
Yes.
To the district, and we just had to iron out the purchasing terms that we can do as a school, but we got that done, so we're, you know, we're pleased.
Yep, so we'll end the night by saying, just do it. We did it, thank you to everybody, let's make a motion to enter into executive session at approximately 8:08 PM, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
So, upon recommendation of the superintendent, we will now enter into, uh, executive session. Brian, can you take the roll?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All against, nay.
Nay.
Substances?
I'm staying.
Motion, here, you already said aye.
I do not.
All right.
I gotta wipe my hands.